Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We're having what is the second of our public budget meetings as we work through the 2021-2022 budget. And some members of council have received some feedback from the public. We did our Talk Bridgewater session a couple of weeks ago now and received some feedback. And the plan is next Monday to pass the final documents. So there's still about a week left for the public to reach out to members of council to ask some questions, share your ideas and comments. So without any further ado, I'll turn it over to the CAO to run us through some of the questions we had last week, and then we'll dive right in.
Okay. All right. So just, I guess, first off, there was just a general question about when the visitor information center lease is up with out in Blockhouse. So it's a joint lease with the town of Bridgewater and the District of Lunenburg. And that expires April 1st, 2023. So we will be obviously coming back to council prior to that to have a discussion about what visitor information services looks like to the town of Bridgewater and how we envision providing that in the future, or is it through a similar type of structure or something different? We have a little bit of time to do that, but we will have to have that figured out before the end of 2022, I would say. There was a, at the last meeting, there was a suggestion that we look at the Pearl Street paving, which had in the capital budget, $225,000 allotted for that. And given some of the construction activity on Pearl Street this coming construction season, that we delay paving Pearl Street, fixing up those areas until the following fiscal year. So staff were asked to look at redirecting that $225,000 to pavement management. So that would make for $625,000 in the capital budget and then $200,000 that we have in the operating budget. Since then, there was a question that was raised about with respects to what if we took $100,000 of that and redirected it towards sidewalk improvements? Because we did note that the amount that was allotted in the capital budget for sidewalk improvements was somewhat low compared to pavement management. And given our priority of active transportation, should we be looking at investing more in sidewalk improvements? So that question was raised. Staff were asked if that could be accommodated. Could we do the work if it were redirected? And the response was yes. So there was no concerns from staff with redirecting that some of that $225,000 to sidewalk. And then the question was raised with respects to crosswalks. So on the slide here, you'll see that one of the changes that we made prior to bringing the final document to you last week was we looked at crosswalk improvements and indicated that it's something that we could defer for years. The question was asked, what does that $10,000 really entail? Like, what are we giving up if we do that? So I asked Larry that question, and that would have been used to look at safe havens and Jubilee Exhibition crosswalk area and some general crosswalk improvements. So we wouldn't be doing that if that $10,000 weren't in the budget unless there were savings somewhere. So there's no concern with putting that back in and redirecting some of that $225,000 towards crosswalk improvements if council wishes to do so too. So it's really a question of how you wish to split up that $225,000 that was allocated to Pearl Street, sidewalk improvements, pavement management, and then do we wish to look at the crosswalk improvements? There was also a question raised with respects to the museum. So if you remember, the museum had a proposal that had some additions. I'll just pull it up here, taking two part-time positions and making them full-time. So essentially, that was an extra $44,000 that was proposed. And that would see a change in service levels at the museum. So this would be, you would agree that you want to increase your service level by doing this. So right now, the museum is open 12 to 5 year-round, 5, 4, 4, 12 to 4 year-round. And this is proposing to expand that service to 9 to 5 year-round. We do do extended hours for four months of the year where we go 9 to 5 in the summer months. But this would see that extended for the full year, and that would be at a cost of $44,000. So the question was raised, well, what if we only funded half of that request, so $22,000? Could we keep the level of service that's proposed? And the answer was yes, but we would draw on existing resources. Some of it, it's about having two people in the building while open. So we would draw on existing resources, like say Patrick or Diana or someone that could provide that second person in the facility when we weren't able to fill it. But we could provide that level of service, and that would result in the savings of around $22,000 by doing that. Then that savings, you would have a decision with respects to what you would do with that because we're trying to balance to zero. We could put that to another program in the operating budget. The contingency was cut by around $75,000. So normally, we'd keep a contingency for unforeseen that come up initiatives council may want to do, but we didn't know about it in February when we dropped it, the budget, and I reduced that and left only $25,000 in there as opposed to the $100,000 that's normally there. So you could redirect that to that. We do know that there was a request from the downtown planning advisory committee for a $5,000 budget amount to enable some street scape type initiatives in the downtown. So you could look at reallocating some of that to that item, the 5,000, and then the rest could go to contingency if you so desired. And lastly, the question was raised with respects to the sewer rate and what that would look like, what if we were to increase that from 15% increase to 20% increase? What would the charge be? And what would that, what would be the implications of doing that? So Kim ran a few numbers so she can give the answer to that question.
So if we increase that sewer rate to a 20% increase for the year, would result in about $85,000 of extra sewer revenue that wouldn't have an offsetting expense. So it would get added to the reserve transfer. So that extra 5% was about $85,000.
So that would increase that wastewater reserve by $85,000 from $570,000, now $85,000 to that. So those were the questions that we received and the answers to them. So I mean, I guess we, council can then decide what you wish to do.
Yeah. So why don't we, while we're here, start with those before we move into the police and fire. So we had talked about taking the Pearl Street, the 225 out of Pearl Street, putting into pavement management, the extra into pavement management. Council Caldwell did mention about sidewalks, very valid point about, you know, are we putting enough into sidewalks? The answer was no, it's like paving, no. So the question was, what if we split that up? Some of it for pavement management, some of it for sidewalks. And then the additional question of the, do we take some of that and put it back into the crosswalk component that was removed? So maybe we'll start with the easy one, which is, is council interested in splitting up the 225 so that's $100,000 into sidewalks and then the remaining into just pavement management? Or do you want to keep it all in pavement management?
If I may, Your Worship, I've been doing a little thinking on that. And that money that we're taking from Pearl Street this year and going to have to borrow next year, it's coming out of reserves. It's $225,000. And I don't know if I can support a budget that's putting us deeper in debt in reserves because it was committed for Pearl Street. Now, we chose not to do Pearl Street, which is a valid choice. But then aren't we really robbing Peter to pay pot because next year, we got to borrow another $225,000 to Pearl Street? And it's not coming out of operating generated revenue. It's coming out of reserves.
Coming out of operating reserve, yeah.
Right. So, you know, and our reserves aren't that high. You can only spend it once. But we got to spend it again next year because we're not doing Pearl Street.
Yep. So one of the options absolutely is to just...
As far as I'm concerned, I don't know if I can support a budget that takes that money from Pearl Street, spends it this year, and next year have to go into reserves again to do Pearl Street. That's where I'm at now because it's a tough year, it's a tough budget, and I just can't see it. And I'm really not in favor of increasing that sewer rate another 5%. We're getting hit pretty hard as residents and taxpayers. You're putting it up 15%, our taxes is going up 10 cents. And anybody with a $100,000 home, which we don't here, is $100 on their taxes. Now you want to take some more from sewer, and it's kind of compounding what we're really trying to do? This is a COVID year. And we're dealing with residents that are middle-low income. And every time you put another tax on them, it's hurting their bottom line. We're doing stuff to help businesses. But I think we got to do some, a few things to do what we can to help residents this year. So that's just where I'm at on that.
I think in terms of the sewer rate, it was just a question that was asked.
Yeah. No, I just wanted to give you my opinion while I had the floor there.
Yeah. So at the last meeting, we had, council had talked about moving the 225. Yes, it is borrowing for that and putting into pavement management. So that was the path that we were on. But we can, if council wishes to change course and just not use that money at all, like you said, if we don't borrow it this year, we have for next year. Or we can increase our pavement management budget. That's why we're around the table today to make those decisions. So it's, just go around, Council Caldwell?
I must say, I had, after last week's meeting, I had similar thoughts to Council Thorburn about maybe we'd be better off leaving it in reserve just for the same reasons you said. We'll be, we'll need the money next year, and the reserves aren't high. So I'm sort of leaning the way Council Thorburn is as well.
Clarification question. So by not putting the 225 in, we would be spending less than previous years in paving overall, correct, including operating?
Yeah. Last year, we increased pavement management to, I think it was $600,000 in the capital budget and $200,000 in operating. So if you did that last two years, it was $400,000 before that. But my understanding is that number can fluctuate a bit, yeah.
One of the biggest complaints we get in town is the state of our roads. Not that we should be paying for our roads, right, Mayor Mitchell?
Things should be fair.
We do get tremendous complaints about our roads. So yeah, it's a tough one. Okay.
Other thoughts? Council Thorburn?
I just speak on this again because I do get complaints too. And I think our roads, I like that song, A Coat of Many Colors. We have many patches on our roads because that's all we can afford to do. But I feel that we're doing the best we can with what we have. And I'm really, I would like to see that money go back. If it was spending and it wasn't coming out of reserves, if our debt ratio wasn't going up and we know it's climbing, then I'd be a little more lenient toward it. But I think for this year, we should just leave it where it is.
Council Feener.
In relation to, we're talking about cross, sorry, just the crosswalk budget that we decided to take out was the $10,000. If I could ask, was that just specifically the Jubilee Exhibition? Was that one project of a few? Or are we removing more than one project, I guess is my question?
Mr. Feener's coming down.
Okay.
So we are having a number of crosswalks analyzed currently. Jubilee Exhibition was on staff's radar as being the next one for potential improvements. But we're also looking at a number of them along King Street right now, at school, Maple, Empire, and Dominion. It's currently in the study phase, so we hope to have some suggestions, I guess, on potential improvements. It's not to say that we can't make improvements under our maintenance program, but that capital, that $10,000 capital that we've had as an annual program over the last number of years wouldn't be there. So, and I think it's, it explained that what types of things that we would typically do under that $10,000.
So it's, as a result of the study, these recommendations are coming back to staff to sort of follow through or recommend and to do based on a safety standpoint?
Yes. And we likely will have this in next year's budget for consideration.
Okay. All right. Thanks for...
Council Caldwell? I will, I had mentioned the crosswalks. I brought that up because first of all, I saw that I've been cut from the budget. I brought that up for a couple of reasons. Number one, on the Active Transportation Committee. And since I've been on the committee, my eyes have been opened to some of the issues we have around issues such as crosswalk safety. And I hate to see that cut because of that. And then coincidentally, last week, I met a woman at, had a heartfelt conversation with me about a loved one who was struck in a crosswalk at one point. And she wanted more money put into crosswalk safety. And this was before I had even seen that we were going to be cutting this money. And I just hate to see an annual money that we put into crosswalk safety coming out when it is a real safety issue for people in the community. I don't ever want to have to come back to council and feel, you know, a crosswalk that could have been made safer that we decided to make a cut there. I don't want that on my conscience. So that was why I brought it up. And I wanted to add the thing about the woman that I was talking to about crosswalk safety in the meantime.
Thank you. Other thoughts on the paving? I'll just say, Council Thorburn, your point is 100% valid. I totally understand. My concern is that we know we have to put, just to stay the course, we have to put about $1.2 million a year into paving. And this would have been half of that. And now we're going to go to a third of that, which is not, it just puts us further behind. And I don't want to borrow and then borrow again for Pearl Street. Then I look at, if we don't do it this year, then we're just further ahead, further behind next year. And then we're further behind the year after that. So every year that we take money out of pavement management just makes it that much worse when we go to do streets, right? So you got a street that you have to skip because you don't have the money. It's supposed to be done, I think Mr. Feener said, every 20 years, we're supposed to be hitting these streets. Now it becomes 21, 22, 25, 26 years before we start getting to these streets. So, but like, I'm torn because I agree with what you're saying. I just, I look at some of our streets and we could spend two hours talking about how the double standard of how we have to pay and what others don't have to pay. But this would be half solved if the province would honor their commitment to deal with the roads that they said they would. But so we've heard kind of both positions on this.
Well, the thing that we really didn't mention was that once we take that money and spend it, we got to pay a charge, which is about 4%. So I think that first year, you're looking at about $9,000, just interest on the money that you have to borrow.
But we're taking it out of reserves.
No, you wouldn't have to. If you had to borrow money, you would be paying that.
Yeah.
What would our reserves be if that comes out? And what would our reserves be then at the end of next year?
So this is the estimated balance at the end of March 31st, 2022, based on the capital budget as presented, which had that $225,000 coming out of operating reserve. So you can see the ins and outs there. So 5.8.
So just to clarify, so the, I know we're not accounting for the gas tax money that we're going to receive, but that would go into operating reserve?
That goes into capital.
Oh, sorry.
So we have another one here, which shows you your capital reserves. The capital reserve is a lot smaller at 1.9. And so that's where your gas tax has to go. It has to fund capital.
Right. Yeah. Okay.
That's about, 1.9 would be the balance at the end of March 31st, 2022. What's that? Oh, double the gas tax. That's right. So we do have $675,000 coming to us on top of that. That will either put it into capital reserve or council will be asked to fund something using the gas tax as opposed to borrowing.
So in other words, we'll be better off, but we just haven't accounted for...
If the decision is to throw it into the capital reserve, yeah, that'll be 1.6. If the decision is to throw it into the capital reserve, yep, that'll be 1.6, yeah. Or 2.6, sorry. But you could decide to take it and if there's eligible projects in your capital budget that you're, you're proposing to borrow for.
Right.
We could always use the gas tax for that too, if they're eligible projects.
More thoughts on this one?
Yeah, well, I'm not in favor of removing that 225. I'd pull a 225 from Pearl into a paving budget and I'd be happy to pull a portion of that out for, for crosswalk improvements as well, to, to make everybody sort of somewhat happy.
Other thoughts? Councilor Feer.
Yeah, I'm just trying to decide what, what would be a reasonable amount for crosswalk improvements. I know initially we had said 100,000.
For sidewalk, you mean?
Yeah.
Sidewalk.
Sidewalk, sorry.
Yeah, so there's 90,000 in the capital budget right now, and the suggestion was put, directing 100,000 to that. So make it 190,000. So essentially be doubling sidewalk improvement.
So where we normally now do concrete sidewalks, does that, I guess, maybe it's a question for our, our town engineer, Mr. Feener, does that add to the costs? And as well, I know obviously we're going to get more life out of a sidewalk versus the pavement. I'm just wondering if all our new projects with cross, sorry, with sidewalks are, are concrete? And how far dollar-wise does, would that allow us if we added, say, 100,000 to our, to our budget for sidewalks?
So I guess our current standard would be concrete when we're doing any, any amount. If for some reason we had to do a patch, say, in an asphalt sidewalk, maybe it's a set of laterals or something, we would put that back as asphalt. But normally if there's a start and stop point, a logical start and stop point, or if there's some distance to it, we will put in concrete. Capital cost-wise, concrete does cost more upfront, but we are a strong believer that it will last longer and the, and the future maintenance cost would be less. I don't have a running distance for cost at my fingertips, unfortunately, but it's something we could provide council if they would like.
Just trying to get an estimate or as to idea of how much that actual budget can go as far as, yeah.
So to that point, so if we're doubling the budget, how, how much do we normally do in a year with a $90,000 budget?
You don't have any costs, Chair.
No. Okay.
I was trying to recall the cost of Empire Street as a, as a, as a go-by, but I can't, I can't recall the cost. Like, we normally do multiple sections throughout town and not just a running distance, so it's certainly something, and perhaps I might be able to find something as, you know, as I'm sitting here.
That'd be a good one, because that was a block. So it'd be nice to know how much that block was, and then in our heads, we can kind of superimpose that.
Sort of gauge what that actually gives you.
I'll see if I can pull up, for example, the Empire Street costs that we're doing.
Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
So Larry, paving we typically contract out, but crosswalk work, I assume we typically do in-house for the most part. So do you even have the staff capacity to deal with the doubling of that budget?
For sidewalks, for sidewalks, it would probably be a combination of in-house and contracting out, depending on the size of each project.
Okay. Councilor Thorburn?
Just one question there. Do you guys have a priority list of locations where it's already identified that should be done? If you had the financial?
So for each year, we do an assessment of all our sidewalks. There's a rating.
Sure.
There's multiple criteria that we go through, and we do that, I'll say, after the winter months when the frost is gone, just like we do for payment management. So there's a scoring that we go through, and then we evaluate them that way and then pick from, I'll say, the top of the list.
So right now, we're kind of, we're kind of in the middle here. We've got a few that want to leave it in and a few that want to think about taking it out. Councilor Caldwell?
Maybe I'm jumping the gun because everybody hasn't spoken on this, but could offer a compromise solution if council is sort of split.
You bet.
So we could look at, we had, I think it was 225,000 for a project. Could do a third to reserves, a third to paving, a third to sidewalks. And perhaps that's a compromise that everyone could live with. I don't know.
I'm not, I'm not in favor of leaving any in reserves for this particular item. I just think we have so much work to do on our roads and sidewalks. It's just, it's reserve money, so use it, every last cent of it.
Brian?
I like the idea of the compromise. It just, you know, it shows that we're looking at some of the projects that need to be done, but it's trying to be fiscally responsible and trying to balance it with leaving some in the reserves.
Councilor McDonald?
I'm a little bit concerned with the compromise and it waters it down a little bit and you don't make any real impact anywhere if you kind of divide it up that much. I'm definitely leaning towards leaving it in the budget. It is a priority. We've heard from our residents, we hear a lot about sidewalks and, you know, specific areas pointed out to us that really definitely need some work. And that's a safety issue. Safety trumps just about everything to me every time. And our roads, like the deputy mayor said, that is the one topic we will hear every time we talk to residents. So just knowing that they are top priorities to our residents, to me, that's justification enough to find the money.
Thank you. It's worth a shot.
I'm not sure we're any further.
Yeah. I think so, there is common ground on the, on the crosswalks though. So I think what I've heard from most people is that the $10,000 for the crosswalk should be put in. So I think, I think we are all in agreement on that. So if you take that out of that 225, it's really 115 that we're talking about, or 215, Why don't we, why don't we think about this one for a bit? We can come back to this one. The other one we had was on the museum.
Yeah.
So instead of two full-time, it takes the two part-time and moves them to three-quarter part-time. So we, it's, there's a compromise there. So the, it's an increase to the level of service of the museum. And then the balance would go into a contingency for something, if something came up.
Yeah. Minus that there's still the 5,000 for the Downtown Planning Advisory Committee. They had recommended that and council deferred that to budget. It's not in the budget right now. So if you were making that, that reduction in the museum and you wanted to accommodate the request of DPAC, I would take it off that, yeah, and then put the rest in contingency.
Thoughts on that one?
Do we have any real information around what's going to happen between 9:00 and noon that will really enhance the services? Is it that they, they have looked at the numbers that they would expect, visitor numbers that they would expect between those hours and it's really encouraging and positive? Or is there additional work that can be done during those hours that will enhance the offering? What's going to happen between 9:00 and 12:00 that we can justify spending that additional money?
Mr. Hurdle?
Yeah, part of it, as we've talked about, is being able to simply open the doors to the public. And the reality is that, you know, for the portion of the morning that we're not open now, we don't have the resources to cover those hours. But, but to your question, counselor, it would allow us to look at doing additional events in partnership with the community. And Museum 2.0 was very much focused on building collaborative efforts with community partners. And where we're at with one full-time staff member and two part-time staff members right now at the museum is that they are tapped out. There's no more room in their schedules to, to increase those collaborations with the community in addition to all the day-to-day operation, operational items that go into running the museum. So having those two staff members go to full-time would essentially allow us to build those relationships more with the community. So we, you know, we'd be talking about more public events, more opportunities to drive traffic through the door. It would also allow us to do more on weekends. I think the council's pretty familiar that right now, at this point in the season, we're Monday to Friday. Now, that's going to change in the summer because we have summer staff on site and we're able to go Monday to Saturday at that point. And I think that that's kind of the vision, that if we had two full-time staff members instead of two part-time, that it would allow us to look at doing more on weekends as well and make the place as, as a whole more accessible to all in the community.
Thank you.
So just, so this compromise gets us almost all the way there for now, right? And then fill, fill from there? Okay. Councilor Thorburn?
Can we, if we go to one full-time and one part-time? And we know it was last year when 2.0 started, the safety issue was trying to have two people there, which is an isolated location, and people had to go other way to go there in order to keep the doors open.
Yeah.
So if, how much impact is it putting on the rest of our staff to have to go down there and?
So the, the discussion that Patrick and I had on that, is that likely what you would see is instead of one full-time and one part-time?
Yeah.
We'd make the two, three-quarters.
Three-quarters.
Yeah, and then you have less of a gap to fill there using existing staff during those periods.
Yeah, because that's where I'm at. It's a safety issue for staff.
Yeah.
And when we're talking about safety for anything else, we seem that that's a primary concern. So it must be a primary concern at the museum.
Yeah.
As well.
Yep, so we, I did ask that question. Could we maintain the nine to five? So you have basically 1.5 FTEs to work with. Can you make it happen? And the response was yes. But as indicated, it would involve, say, Patrick filling in a few hour, being there a few hours, or maybe Diana or Lynette would do, you know, you would pull on those resources to fill those gaps when we couldn't use those part-time people to back each other up.
Councilor Caldwell?
Does that mean we're not necessarily losing any productivity? It's just changing an office space?
Yes, just changing where you work, yeah. Because the idea is that you need two people in there, so it doesn't mean two people are actually doing museum work. You could have that other person just working there, just a second body.
Yeah.
Other thoughts on this?
So the museum is okay with us?
Yeah.
Patrick? Well, then if they're okay with it, I guess we should be.
Well, you've had the discussion with Lynette, right?
You know?
Yeah.
So I could support that if they're happy with it, it meets their needs, so why not?
Yeah, it's, it's still a step forward.
Step forward.
It's not as big a step, but it is a step forward.
A step forward.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, you know, to that point, it can be a transitionary process, right? Like, we can move to three-quarters theoretically over the next year, see how that goes, and then report back to council this time next year and say, all right, we moved to three-quarters. Our staff are still really taxed and we still have all of these opportunities with other groups that we're leaving on the table. And in order to make those really happen, then we have to revisit going full-time with both those members again.
And that's where I see this going. I mean, the Museum 2.0 has been a huge success. I just, for me, to speak for myself, it was, as all departments were making cuts and compromises, I saw the, the two, two additional staff requests being a little bit out of step. And this was a compromise to, to say, yes, Museum 2.0 was working, and so we, we don't want to lose that momentum. So you want to have a, you want to have an increase in level of service, but it has to be, I think, in sync with what else is happening. So I'm, I think it's a good compromise. Okay. Anyone else on that? Are we good with that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
So in terms of the?
Less the 5,000.
Less the 5,000 and then the rest in contingency, is that? Yeah. Okay.
And Councilor Conklin, your, your question was around the sewer rate last week was just a, was just a question? Okay.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. Do we want to move on to police and fire and then we can come back to, to Avery? Which chief is first?
I got police up on the screen. So you do, you do have your, your tab in your, your budget shows the total police department budget that's being recommended by the commission. And so this chart just kind of shows you what's new, what's changed within, within that. And last year, the budget was 3.95 million, and this year, the, the net is 3.98. $31,000 difference. And to, I guess, to council's direction last year, the surplus from the criminal records checks is being directed to operating reserve. So we save the chiefs here if council's got any questions about the additions or additions.
Questions from members of council on the policing budget.
I don't have the exact line at my fingertips, but I made a note that the police fines budget was up. I wrote down 50%, and I'm sure there's a reasonable explanation for that.
Yeah, it's, it was 61,000 last year and it's 92,000 this year.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's in revenue.
Don't jaywalk.
Well, we're only projected to bring in 49.5.
Yeah, this year, yeah. And I don't know how much COVID played into that, but Scott, maybe could answer that?
Chief, do you want to come to the podium and?
Yeah, so as a result of COVID, most of the courthouses were closed most of the summer, so revenue was just starting to pick up for any summary offense tickets that was issued during, basically since last March. The courthouse just kind of back up in September, so everything is being prolonged now and stuff that are coming to trial and coming due, and convictions are starting to be registered. So, so increases will be upcoming if, if fines are, continue to go forward.
So the increase would be dealing with fines issued last year?
Yeah, so everything was delayed as a result of the courthouse. You know, with the courthouse closing six months, nothing proceeded. You know, that's why our court costs were down, et cetera, for operating this year for 2021. So now we're just starting, where members are attending court and more fines are coming due. We were post-aiding during COVID, and then when you called up the courthouses, excuse me, they'd actually extended another three or four months until they were able to open up the courthouse doors and receive payments.
Other questions? Councilor Thorburn?
Just one there. Under crime investigation, we had 3.3 million. And we come in at 3.1, I think there's a difference of roughly $168,000.
Yeah, staff, staffing salary dollars.
But you've increased it $105,000 based on the 3312, not the 3144. So now you're up to 3417. That seems like quite a jump.
So the $105,000 was contractual increases as of April 1st of this year. The collective agreement renewed, there was a 2%, 2.5% increase for all contracts.
Yeah.
So the salary dollars was to meet those obligations.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Chief Feener? All right. We'd like to fire chief.
These are, yeah, the fire is another tab as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's not a whole lot proposed as changes in the, in the, in the fire department budget. And the main, the main item there was, because the 5,500 is the fire inspector's travel cost, right, for car allowance. The 32,000 is, is what's being proposed by the department for some, for some building maintenance items. And the chief's here if you have any questions on those.
Questions for Chief Nos. Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Chief Nos, are the security cameras internal, external?
Security cameras are.
Security cameras are, are both internal and external. And the reason for the, having that is that our administrator is up at the fire hall during her working hours, and she's got, we have caretaker that's there, but she's alone in the building in most, most cases. And when somebody comes to the door, we want her to know who it is prior to her opening up the door and letting people in. And so it's more of a security thing for us. And we also want to be able to have cameras set up in the backyard so that we can keep an eye on our training facilities back there, so people aren't just walking in and doing what they want to do back there at the same time.
Other questions for Chief Naas? Councilor.
May I ask something that's in the long-term capital budget?
Sure, can't let them off this easy, so.
Go away, I guess.
I did notice there's a long-term plan to replace Pumper. I noticed there's no, I didn't see any grants budgeted, so is it reasonable to expect that when the time comes, there would be grants that are typically available for, not to cover the whole cost, but there'd be some grants that are typically available for something like that?
Past history, there hasn't been any. However, I've been reading in the last year, go green, there may be something coming up through the pipeline on that. Nothing has been confirmed yet on that part of it, but we will be looking at all those, and if there are grants available, we do try to apply for whatever we can. I know that some of the other things that are on the list for future, for instance, breeding apparatus and stuff like that, a few years ago, well, it's actually 15 years ago now, just about, we applied for a grant on that, and we got a substantial amount of money towards that purchase. And, and that actual purchase back then, I seen somewhere around 120,000, Councilor.
Yeah, it was pretty near 500,000 when we hit the three departments.
With the three departments, yeah. And we're looking at the future right now, and it's probably going to be close to 200,000. We have to keep looking at that to make sure that we increase the costs as we go along. We try to make sure that we are kind of in line where we're supposed to be, so it's the roll of the dice at the end of the day, whether or not we're close enough, but most of the time, we're pretty, pretty close to it.
But you don't have an option, because when they expire, they expire.
That's right.
Packs and the cylinders.
Sad to say, yeah.
Industry standard. You can't extend them.
Other questions for fire chief? Larry, you just need to change your title to chief, and then you get fewer questions. I guess that's really, be chief of engineering.
We try to keep her in the loop as much as we can. There's so many times that it's a little slow getting to her, but it does eventually get to her, so.
Thank you. Okay. Were there any other items in the budget, suggestions, additions or deletions that members of council pondered over the last week? Councilor Conklin?
Yeah, just a clarification on that administration expense with King Street parking.
Yes.
I'm not sure how we left the?
Were we able to dig into that?
Because I think we?
Whether it was the parking study or if it was bylaw enforcement cost? Parking, parking ticket cost?
It was, the study cost was 40,000 included in last year, and it didn't happen. And that's one we're proposing to fund from this year's surplus going in the operating reserve, so that's going to show up again. However, the, we, all of the bylaw enforcement officers' wages are included in the police budget, so not in the King Street parking at all. However, the parking income is not parking ticket income, it's perking income, so the ticket revenue would go to police.
It's the meter revenue that's shown in here, not the ticket that, it's in the police, yeah.
I believe that's the.
And fines, yeah. So the 42,000 that's in the budget is for administration cost under parking includes?
So that's, that's where we need the clarification. Is that, is that 42,387? What is that?
So the, the 42,387 includes the study, and then another little miscellaneous amount, that's what I was saying. It does not include bylaw officer salaries, which we thought it might have, but it's just parking study and other small amounts that engineering could speak to.
So the salary cost is not included in that, so we're, excess of expenditures, expenditures over revenue is 93,000 now, and so if we add in the cost to enforce, it would be a lot higher in terms of what's not being covered through metered. Tickets probably wouldn't cover that off.
Yeah, it's just the parking permits, like the monthly parking, RBC and so on, and individuals that pay for that, that's included in the revenue from our side. The rest goes through the police budget.
Yeah.
So of the 42,4, 2,000 is toward the kiosks for software fees and supplies, et cetera, and around 400 is there for assigned maintenance type of expenditures.
So the answer to a whole bunch of people's questions, which is always, if you didn't have the bylaw enforcement officer, how much does parking cost on King Street? The answer is 50,000 a year. If you take out the parking study, right, then your, your excess expenditures over revenue is about 50,000 a year.
Excluding?
Without, if you had no enforcement.
If you had no enforcement or tickets or any of that, yeah.
Right.
But to clarify, the 22,000 doesn't include tickets, correct?
No.
Correct, it's just parking permits.
That's permits. Meter, meter revenue, like the coin?
Thought Scott said no, I'm too slick.
Let Scott answer that one.
I thought it was meter and permits.
Permits, not, not funds.
It's the fine revenue that's on the, on the police budget.
The meter, the meters actually come towards us as well.
Yeah, the meters do.
And meter revenue is approximately 30,000.
I guess the issue is, is that if you didn't have enforcement, you probably wouldn't have the meter revenue either, or it'd be a lot lower.
And you wouldn't have parking permits.
Yeah, so it's, yes, and, yeah.
And a lot of other issues.
So meter revenue is, sorry, is 15,500 until March 31st.
Mm-hmm.
After, after, after parking came back in, like?
Yeah, because we had a few.
July, August.
Months of that.
And then we, Christmas, the month of December, it was free as well, so.
Councilor Thorburn?
So there's extra parking spaces that we were leasing out, $300 for the year, whatnot, down there behind the, behind the building here. You can lease out some parking spots?
There's eight parking spaces towards Phoenix Street that we haven't got a lease agreement in place.
Well, once we do that, that will generate more revenue.
That'll have more revenue, yeah.
Right. That's not in this budget, I don't think. So that was 30-some hundred dollars, and I think the Royal Bank was over 3,000, but that's probably in here.
That would be in here because it's existing, yeah.
Yeah, so that would bring it up to 20, 25.
I think the parking study, along with the addition of our new economic development officer, who started today, right, today?
Oh, in person today.
In person today, yes, Mark's been here for a while, but in person today. And I know he's already starting to have those discussions about King Street and parking, so. All that said, did that answer your question, Councilor Conklin?
Yes, thank you.
Other, I waited until you were having a drink of water to ask you the question. Other questions? Items in the budget before we head back to this paving? Okay, so let's, let's circle back to, so we, we have consensus on the $10,000 for the, for the crosswalk, work to be done. Where we don't have consensus yet is on the sidewalk pavement management or leaving it in reserves. So short of me just going around and asking people what they want, I'll just wait, see if anyone else has anything else, has anything to add. Councilor Thorburn?
I'll just ask the question, if we were doing Pearl Street, would everybody around this table still want additional 225,000 put in the budget to do what you want done? That's the question you're going to ask yourself. That money that you were spending on something else wasn't planned to go there in this budget.
Still pavement to me.
No, all I'm saying, Andrew, is it wasn't planned to go there. And we seem to have an agreement, someone.
Councilor McDonald?
I think in past years, and correct me if I'm wrong, we have pulled money out of reserves to increase that budget, and I see this is pretty much the same to, to kind of try to top up that budget and make sure that we get as much paving done as we can in the season.
Yeah, I, I know what you're saying. To me, it's, I was looking for around 600,000 of the paving to be done, not less than we did last year, so I'm looking for us to be as, as close to, as close to where we were last year, recognizing that sidewalks have really been neglected. Like, when you raised that point last week, it's, it's, I think money should be going into sidewalks. But to me, the, the 225 was to pave something. So we're so far behind, I just keep having that number of 1.2 million just to tread water, and we have not put 1.2 million in paving. I think the most we did one year was a million dollars once in the 14, 15 years that I can remember. So that's over a decade of being around the halfway mark of where we should be. So I'm, I'm in favor of, out of the 225, taking, using some of it for the crosswalk, and then putting 100 into sidewalk and the remainder into pavement management. And we're going to go around the room so that we don't have to scroll back.
I'm still leaning towards the compromise, so I just, you know, it feels middle ground, doing something, but yet still being a little conservative with keeping some of that money back as we were planning to do Pearl Street, but it's been deferred. I don't feel that we should be spending all of it. That's already planned for that, that's just my opinion, so.
So you're thinking a third, a third, a third?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilor Callow?
I'll support the idea that I put forward, with a compromise, one-third, one-third, one-third. I'm not sure it'll ultimately get us to a consensus, but I think it's a fair compromise.
Yeah, Councilor Thorburn?
I'm really between rock and hard score. But can I ask a couple of questions?
Of course you can, yeah.
We're getting an extra 700?
675 in gas tax.
675, can that be used for paving?
Yeah.
So it's money really that I didn't realize that we were getting that we originally wasn't going to get. Does that make sense?
It was unplanned, yes.
It was unplanned.
It's not, and it's not reflected in your reserve amounts, right?
Right.
So that's how unplanned it was?
So really, in retrospect, if we hadn't have got that money, I'd have stopped to my guns and wouldn't support the budget. But we got a gift, then I'm a little more flexible, because I think we have to be responsible, and we have to show a resonance that we, we are, and we take this seriously. That's why we have debates. You don't always win, but you'll have to have a good, robust discussion so we can go forward together. So I would support that, realizing now that we can take that from the extra money we're getting from the gas tax.
Right, I mean, right now, we have it shown coming from operating reserve, but the reserve is ready, so, yeah.
So you would, you would then just show less coming from the gas tax? Is that what you would do?
The odds are the difference, yeah, yeah. Operating reserve is a little bit more flexible than capital, so.
So are you with, with that, are you looking for the whole thing, or are you looking at the compromise one?
No, I, I think with that, and I would support Andrew's decision with the, with the whole thing.
Okay, Councilor Donald?
Unfortunately.
So I'm, I'm with the 10 for crosswalks, 100,000 for sidewalks, and the remainder for, for paving.
Okay. Councilor Conklin?
Yeah, yeah, I would agree with Councilman McDonald's breakdown. So I was kind of losing you on the third, a third, a third. Were we kind of looking at about 70, oh, 70,000 or so for crosswalk improvements on that third, a third, a third?
No, it was a third sidewalks, a third pavement, a third in reserves. And that, we would, that's after we took the 10 out, because I do think we were all doing that, that crosswalk. Yeah, okay. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I'm in favor of spending every last cent of it. I equate it to, you know, our wastewater issue, you know, for years, we ignored it, didn't spend enough money in it, and then we hit with this massive mopping bill to fix it. And I feel that our streets are, and sidewalks are going to be in the same situation if we don't at least put some more money into it. So I like the 100, 110, 115, or whatever it is, kind of, 10.
So it seems like that's where we're going to land. Next week, things could change, but that's, that's, right now, with the majority, I think that's where we'll draft our budget up to that, and we can, we'll debate it again next, next week. I think that's all the ones we had questions outstanding for, right?
Yeah.
So any other members of council have any, anything else from this budget document before staff put it together as a final draft? And again, if, if stuff comes up this week, email the CIO, CC Council, we'll get answers to the questions, as the public engage you. You know, the budget isn't final until council votes. Many times, we've made little changes at the last minute. I know Dawn used to sit in there with a pencil, but as she always said, and I'm sure Kim would say the same thing, just remember that anything you add, the money's got to come from somewhere. So it's easier to take stuff out of the budget, but it's not as easy to add something in because we have to find revenue for that or somewhere.
So a question, the 675 from gas tax, when we do receive it, what options do we have with that, despite it not being technically in the budget?
So you can, you can direct it to your reserves.
Yeah.
To your capital reserves, those would go up by 675. Or you can look at your, your capital budget, because you, you can only spend it on eligible things, right? So you could, you could go into your capital budget for this year, if you wanted to look at it, using it this year instead of putting in reserves, and say, okay, what are we debt financing or funding, debt financing or pulling from operating reserve that might be more eligible for gas tax? And so you can just look at that and say, like, if you're looking at debt financing, there's some sewer work that we're, we're funding from debt financing, some of the exit, well, we can't do that, but there's culvert replacements, wastewater treatment plant pump station 11, so there's, if you're, if you're okay using gas tax to fund wastewater improvements, then you can borrow that much less by using that gas tax as opposed to borrowing, or you can put it in and use it next year. Like, there's no shortage of, of things to use it for. And we can bring that back to council. We don't borrow for, for items until they're complete, right? So we might do some temporary financing, but we would bring, bring that back to council and say, how do you want to use this 675? Do we want to not borrow for something, or do we want to put it in reserve? When we get it.
When we get it, yeah. It's in the mail.
Yeah.
Other questions? Comments? Going once, going twice? Okay, so next week, we'll finalize this. Thank you to staff, thanks to the two chiefs for coming, and we'll see everybody next week.